Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call it the January meeting of Valdosta Lounes County zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Everyone in attendance, please make sure and sign the attendance sheet that is at the back of the room. Before we begin, I will explain the process for the meeting. I will call each case by its case name and case number. The city or county staff representing the case will then come to the lectern and present the facts of the case. After presentation, the board may or may not ask questions of the staff. Once the board has heard the case and asked all the questions necessary of staff, we will move on to hearing from either the applicant or the applicant's representation. After hearing from the applicant, we will hear from anyone else who wishes to express support for the case. Finally, after that, we will hear from anyone who wishes to express opposition to the case. Anyone addressing the board will please come to the lectern and give their name and address for our record. For clarity and respect, we ask that only the person at the lectern address the board and that the audience give them uninterrupted chance to be heard. If there is important information that you feel we need to consider, then please come to the lectern when it is your turn and you are called. In the interest of time, though, the board asks that you keep your comments brief and to the point. Please do not come to the lectern only to restate the same information we have already been given by someone else. Once the board has had the chance to hear from all sides on the matter and ask any questions we feel necessary, then we will render a decision. If we do not feel that the necessary information is available at this time to render a decision today, then we may decide to table the decision and hear the case at the next meeting. Please be aware that this board is here today only to address various applications for zoning codes for Lounes County and City of Valdosta. This is the only matter which this board has been given the power to render a decision. We cannot and do not have the power to address any other matters that are not covered by the zoning codes of Lounes County or City of Valdosta. First case is VAR 2019-01, Stoker Development, Mulligan Road and Coventry Drive. Ms. Deborah, I believe that's yours.
For the record, I have the conflict reduced, so I'm going to have to step aside.
Okay. The record shows Mr. Franklin stepped aside on this.
Do we have a forum?
Do we have a forum? You have a forum of people, but I'm here for that base of the forum, but you can still add. Okay? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I will be presenting to you and the board members this afternoon, application VAR 2019-01, Coventry Villas and Coventry subdivision lots number 19 and 20. Because this application request is twofold, if it is okay with you and the board, sir, I would like to try to address each one separately. And I would like to start with the proposed Coventry Villas project, which is going to be north of Coventry subdivision. The Coventry Villas is an eight and a half acre vineyard district project that was rezoned to PD plant development district by the Lounes County Board of Commissioners in January, I'm sorry, in July of 2018. That rezoning application number was RDZ 2018-14. In that approval, the Lounes County Board of Commissioners approved the PD plant development district with an eight feet side yard setback. Since the approval of this request, Mr. Jerry Stoker, the owner operator of Stoker Development LLC, has contacted the zoning office with the request to reduce the side yard setbacks from the approved eight feet to that of five feet for side yards for each lot within the subdivision. This will be a 35 single-family residential lot of development.
Board?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The eight feet, that's a standard in PD or that was special to this?
There is no standard because the order they get to decide.
So when they submitted their site plan to which they're bound, they agreed to eight feet and that's what was resolved on that?
Yes, that is what this proposal is.
Thank you.
Okay, quick question.
Yes.
There was a note in here about staff recommended approval conditions of thought fence requirement, is that right? Yeah, that's right. Call of the Lounes County Board of Commissioners' condition regarding construction of fences between dwelling units. What, do you know what that requirement was?
You don't have to forgive me, attorney, rightly, I'm not commending with that, so I'm sure that Mr. Rivera didn't speak on that issue for you.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking at a fire department, yes, ma'am. When they look at these side yards, is there a shortage that they will draw a line to?
Again, Ms. Nancy, I've heard of projects with five hour side yard setbacks. From what I can recollect, fire concerns usually say how are we going to get in around 20 the minute structure?
Do you want to proceed to the next one?
Yes. Thank you. The second, the second portion of this application contains to Coventry subdivision, which is south of Coventry Villas proposal. The Coventry subdivision is a 37 single-family residential lot development. This was approved down PD by the Lounes County Board of Commissioners in April of 2016. That rezoning phase was entitled RDZ 2016-08. Within that approval, well, basically what we have in this proposal, this request, sir, Mr. Stoker, the code says, the UOD says, there's a table in the UODC, Table 4.06.02B, which establishes the various developmental standards as it pertains to PD. One of those standards require that all structures are at least a minimum distance of 30 feet from the exterior of the property boundary. What we have in this particular case is for lots 19 and 20, these lots, corner Coventry Drive and Mulligan, on the Mulligan side, it is depicted on a survey plaque that was submitted. There's a 10-foot easement of sort along Mulligan. The zoning office and zoning staff is of the consent that those lots are on the exterior boundary of this property and that they should carry that 30-foot setback. Mr. Stoker, in this instance, would like to ask that that 10-foot, which will encompass that utility area, would be the standard building setback for these two lots. Therefore, in this situation, he's asking for various 20 feet to both those lots. I would like to go on record as saying that I spoke with the zoning administrator regarding these two, to see if there was any other available options there, and I do believe that she said that she could work with Mr. Stoker in regards to implementing an administrative waiver, which will give them a 20% relief, probably a requirement of 30 would give them between 4 foot setback versus the 10.
Any questions?
Is that a 26 or 24?
24.
Okay. 20%. 26.
20% of 30. Yes, ma'am, so that would be correct. And what she did there, Nancy, we have to consider the road classification and the ride away. I think there's various pictures of the sites, and I hope that they give you a better picture of what Mr. Jerry and his team are requesting.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Is the advocate here or representation who wishes to speak on behalf of this?
My name is Matt Phelps, under engineer Walter Shover, I manage this 4560 at Ballon Drive. Couple of questions I heard, Mr. Bradley, about the fence requirement. The, what that is discussing is people, when you fence their rear yards, sometimes on larger lots, they want the fence between the houses, fence a portion of the side yards. In this case, the fire department said if you go to five feet, as long as the fence has gone beyond the rear corner of the house, they're okay. And the reason being is, well, safety is one of them, and also allows if there is a fire, typically the power meter is on the side of the house, that way they're guaranteeing they can get to it and shut the power off to the house.
So rather than having a fence between?
On the property line, about halfway up, when you come over the side into the house. Yes, it would be strictly straight up behind the house, but it would be fence, because it could not come between the houses into the side.
Okay.
And that has been approved on numerous subdivisions actually directly adjacent to us, Coventry subdivisions, in one of them, Barrington and Glen Laurel subdivision, they just want to agree, those are all have five foot side yard setbacks. And that was actually the condition for commissioners, but if this gets changed, maintain that, bring that forward from all the other developments to make sure that's maintained for safety. Basically, so that was my one comment on that, is to maintain like Sasa, they want to maintain safety continuity, I think that will, as long as that condition is in there, that should be satisfied.
Got a question. What year was Glen Laurel developed?
What year was Glen Laurel? What year was Glen Laurel? I don't recall.
We started about 2000.
2000. Everybody who's, Barrington subdivision.
They were reported together.
Five years, about six years ago, moving forward. That includes Barrington subdivision, which is 33 building lots, that includes Glen Laurel, which is 94, and Coventry, which includes 35. And then also in Gramercy subdivision, that is on PD, but in Gramercy, those lines were 80-foot line, and it was on the eight-foot side yard setback on an 80-foot line. But all together, about six years, and we're still building them.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to speak to all these three? We've adopted that in May of 2016.
Is the, is the issue and the main reason for this request that you want to put a lot of the house in?
Yes, be able to get at least a one-car garage, just talking to some builders at this point, remember, if you have five-star purchased lots, they're saying that the eight-foot is severely restricting them to what they feel they want to do, the market's on demand involved in there. They need that one-car garage, and this will subdue them an extra six feet width to make this a more feasible desire for the house.
When you were making this plan, you're the developer for those others that you mentioned, Gramercy and all them, may all have five foot?
Yes, ma'am.
Why did you not ask for a five foot from the commissioners?
At the time, there was discussions, there was back and forth with staff discussions on what we could get approved for PD zoning at that time. I think the fire department, even though it had been previously approved and recorded on the subdivision class, actually, they were wavering on that, whether they want to allow it or not again, and we said, okay, you can use approval and move forward and come back at a later date and work all this out in this format, and that's the route we decided to take.
Okay, well, so it's my understanding that when you want to change your PD, you go back through the planning process, you don't come here?
This?
That you go and you make your PD change through planning and zoning. So is there something why you didn't do that?
I think this would be considered a minor change to the PD, which doesn't require board commission approval.
But it's a way that you could do it, you could say, we have this different PD, we want to do five foot instead, and have the commissioners never be PD recording.
I guess in theory it could go that way, but the court says it should come here.
I've never seen one of these before, that's why I ask. Okay, thank you.
Follow the directions of the center.
When Glen Laurel and these others were developed with these five setbacks, were they originally set out as five feet and then later changed accordingly? I mean, when they set out as five feet or they set it up as eight?
Yes, ma'am, they were set at five.
And then later on, they all came before the Board of Appeals at that time to change?
They were set at five, and all that was approved, and then, I can't say anything other than sometimes opinions change as you go down through time, and this was something that was kind of, we should watch it for a moment, and there were deadlines, there needed to be something to be turned in, so we can address this at a later date, and then see if we can get away.
Okay, I have some questions about those two lots.
Okay, sure.
They sit on the end of the corner, drove past there the other day, there are the two corner lots at the entrance, and they're on the main road and they're on the little entry to the, which way will the house face?
The interior, Coventry Drive, the interior.
So this is a side yard?
This would be a side yard.
Side yard issue.
Yes, ma'am.
So we want to be able to have the side yard fence be way over there, what are we, what are we going for? What's the issue with the setback on the side yard there? You're going to build the house all the way up to the road?
Well, there's a 10-foot easement on the lot, so the house would, has to be at least 10 feet away, which is basically what we're asking for, the easement line and setback line to be one of the same.
So they'll step right on the edge of the?
I think the next, potentially, it could be 10 feet from the right of way, which is still another 10, 12 feet or so from the road itself, but just asking, all the other lots have five foot setbacks, and that's a good idea.
Right, well, see, here's, when developers are land, and my, we've heard a lot of cases where developers will come and go, well, it's on the corner, it's special. What you knew when you were developing, that it was going to be on the corner and it was going to be special, so you could have moved everybody down a little bit, or made them a little smaller, or done it some different way, because you knew that there would be corner lots when you started out, and you knew what the setback would be when you started out. No? Or is this a surprise?
No, I will say, I was not actually engineering for that particular one, so I'm playing catch-up on this one a little bit.
Well, the engineer was, knew what the setback on that lot would be.
And, yes, ma'am, you're right, and all of the plats, recorded plats at the forehouse, really let a, the setback and the 10-foot easement, the 10-foot easement is the setback. There's not a larger 30-foot setback recorded on those lots. And that's where there's actually, I'm not sure what's honestly happened on this 10-foot subdivision, because like I said, I wasn't involved from day one, but all of the lots, Ms. Deborah mentioned in a PD, there's a 30-foot setback around the perimeter.
Right.
Well, all of the lots are recorded with a 20-foot setback.
Well, is this a PD or no?
It is PD, but they're all recorded with a 20-foot setback. They are actually in the plaque right here, if you want to see. So.
It's okay about?
I'm not really sure what's, what has happened in there over time, to be honest. Even what was put in the plaque in here shows that, has 20-foot rear and five feet on the side, and this.
Except for the perimeter.
The perimeters were told to be 20? I don't know why, but they are.
No.
And all the houses.
I'm going to call them.
I'm not going to try to give an exact answer to that, because I was not pretty to the review process, but I will say it sounds as if perhaps staff dropped the ball, and I will accept responsibility for that. And perhaps the plaque was able to be recorded as, but it is written in the code that with the project, the exterior lights, the structures have to be at least a minimum from the exterior block.
Why did they set that at 30?
Again, Nancy, not being pretty to the adoption of the UODC and consultant and staff that was involved, their reason, I can't try to answer that in my own, I would say first.
Well, I was wondering if there, with the fact that you give an administrative waiver down to 2016, if it has anything to do with road widening down to, you know, in the future? Would it then vary from 24 to 26 because it's a connector run and they're more apt to be widened, maybe down to, or have to be widened?
I'd have to know that.
Do you want to come in?
Yes, ma'am, I would check completely. I do not know if there's any future of some open, some wide either of those roads.
Not that there would be a proposal to do it now, but the more it develops, the greater the need becomes for a wider road to accommodate the traffic. And if you don't have a 10 feet, where are you going?
There's a 60-foot right of way currently, Baldwin Road, there's a 60-foot right of way, which is more than enough to handle an additional lane and traffic potentially if there's a, seriously doubt in the location of that road, that would happen. I will say that this particular subdivision, this plant development, had lots of things that were, I'm saying, out of the ordinary. Typically, lots on subdivision like this have to front the interior, new small residential streets, then a whole row of houses that were allowed to front Baldwin Road, the main road. So that's typical, what typically is of other subdivisions, plant developments. Like I said, everything's platted, 20-foot rear, five-foot setbacks on the side, except for a few lots have eight for some reason. There was a lot of conditions involved in this that didn't follow the standard normal PD regulations. So I think it was just something that if you got lost in translation over time, and basically what they're asking for is, basically, recall the plaque that you ordered at forehouse, essentially, is what they asked for.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? We do ask to be heard on the board.
Okay. If there's anybody else here in support of this application would like to speak?
I'm Jerry Stoker, I'm the developer, my address is 4836 Oak Bar, I live in Austin. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Lorenzo, my name's Lorenzo, Mr. Jim Fowler, Sharon Fowler, and Ms. Linda Zahn. Ms. Zahn, and this is her son and mate, they, their property backs up, both parties, their property backs up, the Coventry Villas. And when we did the development, in the zoning process, I went to them, of course, told them what my plans were to do, and of course, they all are now, and now are supporting about the side yard. I don't want to get into the politics of what happened, because that doesn't do any good. The fact of the matter is that we have done five-foot side yard setbacks for the last six to eight years. It's always been that way. In the last couple of years, there's been a meeting back and forth about the fire department not wanting this, and the fire department not wanting that, but there's never been, and this is just my suggestion to the county, and I made this suggestion to the county engineer, the plaque, going back to the two lots, the plaque was recorded, we made some concessions with the county as far as money, water, and sewer to the rear of Coventry subdivision to accommodate the negative commercial side at my expense. The county also wanted parking spaces on the, in the subdivision that was adjacent to the playground. I argued that point because basically, and I'm trying to get to why we're here now, basically, I was opposed to that because basically what has happened is when you do a PD development, Lounes County basically now is requiring to do some type of amenity area for the residents. I have no problem with that, I think it's, I think it's great. That money is spent by me, not the county. However, in Coventry's situation, I made the amendments to the county, the sidewalks were put in, the parking lots were put in, and now we have a problem where all the residents from other areas use the playground because we can't stop it because we have parking that's adjacent to a county approved street. So that's one problem. The concessions with the fire department, and it is recorded on the plaques, in all the plaques that we have done in the last six or seven years, is the fire department basically does not want you to do a fence. is the fire department basically does not want you to do a fence in front to say, "This is a house," and this is the front of the house. They do not want a fence on the front of the house, and I agree for that. So the concession with the fire department over the last six to eight years, it's been more longer than that, but I'm just saying, just for this development area, we noted on the plaque, and the planning and zoning offices recommendations also, that we put the fence to the rear of the houses with a gate. And of course, we've never had a problem, and we did put on the plaques. And then all of a sudden, when we went to the zoning on this piece of property, you know, there seemed to be some politics involved about, "Well, are we going to do eight foot, or are we going to do five foot?" The PD development, the sidejar setbacks are basically at the discretion of the developer, as long as it's agreed upon with the zoning, and zoning people here in Mullen County. So, again, we've got recorded plaques of the five-foot sidejar setbacks. It's been done. Why all of a sudden it's changed, I do not have an answer to that. I will say, on the two lots, on lots 19 and 20, those lots were recorded. We made obviously some concessions to the county. We, the county let us put, I think it was six houses on the front of both of them, and we agreed on those six lots to do an eight-foot sidejar setback. The reason for any is because the county did not want the people who live in those homes to back their car up on Mulligan Road. They wanted a little extra sidejar where they put a concrete driveway, kind of a side drive, where they backed out of the yard, they could kind of back up and then head parallel to Mulligan Road. That concession was made on lots 32 through 36 in the subdivision. If the county never bothered with the thirty-foot right-of-way until a builder came down to buy the lots, and the builder was told that he could not purchase the lots, because they weren't buildable, and of course, that's why we're here today. The county imposed a one-foot non-imperturbable easement on the front of lots 19 and 20. And the reason why that easement was put there was so those lots could not face Mulligan Road. The county did not want those two lots facing Mulligan Road. They wanted them to be interior lots. We agreed. My argument is this. If the county at the time we were doing the development wanted a thirty-foot sidejar setback on these two lots, then at that time, we, and I don't know this for a fact, we probably could have adjusted those lots and put them facing Mulligan Road like the other six lots, and took a little footage out of the lots on the interior to make up for that. That was not done. So now we're sitting here with a recorded plaque saying that lots 19 and 20 partly have a five-yard sidejar setback and a ten-foot utility easement, and basically, we're being told that they're not buildable. So that's where we're at. I would say, the only purpose, if we have to do an eight-foot sidejar setback in Coventry Villas, then it leads to a smaller shotgun house. And I'm sure you're all aware, every time I come before, and I'm sure Mr. Carmelo, Mr. Diddy will agree, every time we come in front of the county and the planning commission for PD zonings, the word is, "We don't want a blue pool house." "We don't want blue pool houses." So we're here now today trying to eliminate having blue pool houses, because on an eight-foot sidejar setback, the most any builder can get is a one-car garage. That's it. It's going to be a thirty-four-foot wide house. These people do not want one-car garage shotgun houses, and that's why we're here today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, all right. Is there anybody else here, anybody else here in support of this case?
Yes, I'm Tony. I live in Coventry Village. I have the area of the two white buildings, right, you see up there? Been there twenty-something years, and everybody that's back there has been there longer. We don't want the small houses. It takes away from our property value and everything else. I understand what you said about the player, and there's a player that's due to be riled to the north of that white building you said there. And I agree with the people coming in and using it, and coming through our yards, and coming into our yards. So this broker's got a nice layout, and I like the program that he's got done. And I would rather see a larger house for property values of our property and all the surrounding properties around it than having some little shotgun house put in there with one-car garage. And I don't see the word, that variance should be stopped. I think it should be built with facilities on that home. We all want to support that. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and let you know that we are in support of this one.
Questions? Okay, I'd like to serve.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to make a note for a reference that Mr. Fowler is our military fire chief at New York Old House.
My name is Linda Zahn, and I live at 388 Pine Road. I've lived out there since 1987, and I was the previous owner of the property. I am here to say that I support a larger home. I do not want a blue pool home back there. And it's my belief, in my opinion, that a larger home would be more attractive to a family that is looking to purchase a home in that area. And this is a thriving area, and still a thriving area. And so I'm just here to show that I support a larger home, and that I'm hopeful that this will be approved. Thank you. This is my son. He may want to speak.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question. If this factor is approved, what is the difference in the square feet of the house?
I'm sorry, I don't hear what else. You know, what's the difference in the square feet?
Square footage, if it's an eight-foot easement or five-foot.
Uh, on a... Now, you could, you could build a two-story house, but that's not true to do here. But on a single, on a one-car garage house, you're looking probably somewhere between 1250 and 1325. That means your house would be roughly thirty-four feet wide by fifty by fifty, so to speak. If you did a two-car garage, and I did not bring the plan written, but I have hired an architect firm, I have filed house plans for the various, if you approve. I have five house plans now being drawn by Cornerstone Design. They're forty-foot wide by, up to 58 to 59 feet deep, and they run anywhere from 1375 up to 1545. I have hired an architect firm out of Kennesaw, Frank Betts. As some of you familiar with Frank Betts. They're one of America's premier architects for homes, design homes. And they are designing four homes, specifically for this subdivision, and I have to buy a license, and those homes will not be able to be built anywhere else in Mullen County unless they're licensed with Frank Betts. But those houses are Frank Betts home, they run 1400 up to about 1565, roughly.
Can we focus on that? I would really like to know why the commission approved eight foot rather than five foot. Why, why did we have this be a non-standard? It came through planning and zoning at eight feet, planning and zoning was recommending eight feet, and instead of five feet, we've been doing five feet all this time? Can we focus on the commissioner?
We need to table the meeting and bring it back over to the next meeting in order, if the decision is to do some more research on information.
Chairman Bumey, the commission approved eight feet, because that was presented to them. Five feet wasn't presented to them, if I'm answering your question.
Okay, was, was five feet ever presented to planning originally?
Not in the public hearing, because...
No, no, a lot of the public hearings, the planning and the TRC, was five feet presented, and, and the staff said, "No, you should do eight feet."
I wasn't at the meeting, but I believe Mr. Soker and the previous planner discussed five feet. I think that was what you originally wanted, five feet. And the county planner recommended eight. I wasn't at the meeting, but that's my...
I'm curious, why do you recommend eight, eight with these other sections? Yep, that's one of my questions.
Well, of course, you all know the previous planner, not me, and can't answer that. I can't answer that question.
Can I ask you your question? This is the original preliminary plaque that was submitted to the planning committee. And that plaque, it shows five feet.
And also, you were asking about Coventry Villas, the...
Yes.
If not the two lots.
I can see that. I think by magnifiers, I'm not magnifying. Yes, I'm asking about the Villas. Were they presented, and the answer is, yes. They were presented to staff as five, and staff had recommended eight, and that's what the commissioners approved. Okay.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay.
That's what we were told by staff at the time, with objections to the fire, but that's all we can get through. We have to come back and do this at a later date.
And, and your other choice is to go back with that plan to the commissioners and say, "We want to modify our PD." How much does that cost?
Um, about $600.
And how much did this cost?
Four, five hundred.
About the same. I don't know, you can wear the pants.
Ma'am? I like to make a statement. I like to tell, I can add, I've always been like that. I wear my motion on my sleeves, and I'm going to tell it just like it is. We have people who represent non-development, I'm not talking about...
I'm sorry, I won't let you know that.
They are not about that. The problem, the problem that we have is that we have people who are making these decisions that have a, a long list, and that's okay. I don't have a problem. I have been over many, many times to accommodate. It should be a win-win situation for the county, and me, and the public. However, we have people making decisions, and did make decisions, and still making decisions, that have a long list. My suggestion to this committee and to Mullen County going forward, if it is a black and white, that you can do a five-foot sidejar setback, then you give us a five-foot sidejar setback. Don't come up with an eight-foot or a ten-foot, because you don't like me, or you don't like the area, or you're just... It's politics. That's, that's all this is. It's politics. My suggestion to the fire department, if you want eight foot, then put it in writing, and let it be eight foot, and then from now on, when we get ready to go to the development, we won't be down here doing it. That's just strictly my suggestion. Something has to be in writing, not, "I won't." And that's why we have this problem there. Thank you.
Do you feel you have any information necessary to make your decision?
I do.
All right. Is there anybody else here, I'm sorry, are there any other questions of, of Mr. Soker? Is there anybody else here in favor? Is there anybody else here in opposition to this variance? Was there any contact made to your office?
There was a couple of phone calls, someone just inquiring, and we found what variance was.
Okay.
What if it was us?
All right. Open the table for a motion. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Are we doing one of the variance requests at a time, or are we both...
We can either handle it each individually, or, I think they all both need to be put together eventually, but they, you can, I think your motion can be addressed in each one separately within the same motion.
Okay, well, I'll give it a shot on variance request number one first. I make a motion on variance request number one to approve the request conditioned upon the fence requirement recommended by the board commissioners, that fences be filled at the back of the house, rather than all the way up to the front. And regardless of, other than that one condition, just as requested, siding criteria deemed.
Anything on the second?
Yeah, I'll make one on the second also. So on the second, I make a motion that variance request number two be granted as presented siding criteria deemed.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
I've got a question.
Okay. All right, let's do more. Can we break it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll separate, so first motion we had was on the, was on the subdivision regarding the fences, approval regarding the fences up to the back side of the house. You have a question?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right. Do we have a second?
There was a second.
Okay. All those in favor? So the first, first portion of variance passes. Do we have a motion on the second portion of the total variance?
I make the motion to approve with, rather than a 26-foot setback, a 20-foot.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. So a 20-foot variance rather than 26?
Okay, pardon?
Going to give you a little bit less.
I'm actually, we're talking about lots 19 and 20, a 20-foot...
Setback? Rather than 26? Rather than 26?
We already have a, we have a ten-foot...
You have a 30 now. And they can change it to 26, but we're going to...
It's going to work.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We had a second. Do we have a vote? All those in favor? Two in favor, all those against? Two in favor, all those against? Okay. I will vote against, uh, so the motion does not pass. Do we have another motion on the second portion of the variance?
I'll make the same motion that I, I made, so to reverse the variance request number two. I motion, I make a motion that, that variance request be granted as presented siding criteria deemed.
Okay. We have a second. All those in favor? All those against? I'll vote in favor. Second, second portion of the total variance passes. Do we need to give you an further explanation? Is that, is that clear as mud?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. All right. If, if need be, let me show Mr. Kirkland is coming back to the table and this. This is case, uh, APP, velocity case, APP 2018-09, Wally Myers, 2528, Melrose Drive. Ms. Tracy?
Before you start, hold on a second. Because apparently we have nobody here from the applicant group.
Yes.
Were you aware that they were not going to be here?
No, I was not. I reminded them to be, that they, um, reminded again, and, and called them this morning, and messaged us with the.
I went and looked at it Sunday and talked to his wife and told her, "Now, we need to see y'all Tuesday afternoon." And where I'm coming from is, in the past, when we've not had anybody from the applicant here to always do a discussion, to react without having a chance to put in.
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions, so I would like to do that.
I would like to say.
We have a motion to table, second. Do we have a second?
Okay, who was the motion, Craig?
Gretchen.
I have lost, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, moved too fast. We have a second.
Who, who, what was I saying?
All those in favor?
Okay.
And then, I think that's it.
I didn't get any minutes.
Yes, there was no minutes for today.
Yes, I will take a spot if anyone says that. My dummies were not enrolled, and they did not get finished my box. They will be finished by next Monday.
Is there any other business that we need to discuss? Anyone? I believe that's it. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.